Okay, folks, it is six o'clock. So it is time for our study session for the Charter Review Committee. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we please have a roll call?
Certainly. Councilpersons, Baer.
Here.
Dupre.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Salsito.
Here.
Zor.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
And Mayor Higgins.
Here.
We are here to discuss the Charter Review Committee. Our charter has been in state for nearly 100 years, and it's just, it's time to look at it and maybe do some cleanup. And there were some suggestions that came from the committee. Our learned city clerk here was our chairman, so I'm gonna let her run with the meeting a little bit and see what we have to say.
Okay, so, besides myself on the committee, there was Mike Higgins, Jason Baer, Kathy Carter's in the audience, and then we also had Mike Bergin, and Tom Carnes, and Kathy Caesar, who are, I don't see here right now, but there were seven of us, so we did go through the whole charter and picked out some things that we felt, maybe things that you would entertain as charter amendments to go on a ballot before the people. Remember, this wasn't a review commission, so we didn't have the authority to really go through the whole thing and ask you to change the entire charter. So there were some chapters in here that we felt were things that had been updated by state laws and stuff like that. We kind of stayed away from those and left them alone, because the state law does supersede this, so we have to go by that. Either state or federal does supersede it. What we were kind of trying to pay more attention to were the things that were local-only issues that we felt you may be inclined to update. So we can go through the report if you want to do that. It's pretty much by chapter and section, according to way the charter's laid out. The one thing that most of the committee members felt very strongly about was the pronouns throughout the entire charter. And again, Ed has asked the Attorney General if there's a way that we could do wording for a charter amendment on the ballot that would allow all of those pronouns to be updated to something a little less gender-specific and be more gender-neutral with a single amendment, as opposed to having to itemize each place where a change needed to take place. That would've been very cumbersome and not doable. So depending on what his answer is, we may or may not be able to get that done without a complete charter revision. In order to do that, you would have to have the people elect a charter revision committee, and those people would have to go through and revise everything in there, and then the people would vote on the entire revised document. Okay?
So everybody understands what she is saying is, everywhere in the charter, it says, "He will be the city clerk, he will be the city manager, he will be the council." And we would like to, as members, we would've liked to get that changed towards a pronoun where it could be an either, or, because clearly, we have a few women around.
You one or two of us.
Clearly.
Can I ask a quick question?
Mm-hmm.
So what you're saying, though, is if we wanted to change the whole charter, we would need to actually elect individuals to do that?
There would have to be a citywide election, and a commission would have to be elected by the people to do a complete revision to it.
But to just make-
We can do small amendments to change portions of it without that, but in order to do a wholesale revision, you have to have a revision commission do that.
So for each item that we want changes made to, would that be a separate ballot?
Yes. Not a separate ballot, but a separate item on the ballot.
Yes, okay.
And it could either be voted yea or nay.
Okay.
Independently, so...
How does that work, Carrie, though, for, does, do we get charged per, like, item? Or how does that work?
The printing of the ballot would depend on how much you were putting on a ballot. I wouldn't recommend that we put too many amendments on any one ballot. That tends to make people nervous and think that you've, you know, you're trying to hide something or do something, you know, untoward. And that's not the purpose of this. The purpose of the suggestions that we were making were to bring it more into this century, as opposed to the previous one.
Okay.
So outside of the, trying to do the gender-neutral pronouns, one of the things that almost everybody agreed was that we felt that the two-year terms that our current elected officials have really isn't enough time for any of you to come in as a new councilperson or a new treasurer and learn the job before it's time to run for reelection again. And so they felt that, and they actually kind of had me take a rather impromptu, informal poll of my other clerks in the county. And so I did that at one of the clerks' meetings, and about two-thirds of them have four-year terms. About half of those people have staggered terms for their council members, where three of them are elected, and then two years later, three more, and then two years after that, the first three seats would be up for reelection.
The thought being that you always have three experienced people there.
Right.
So you don't elect four at one time that would, could change everything overnight.
Well, the learning curve is really what, you know, you're looking at, is trying to keep some stability in the council and, you know...
Not worry about him running for election.
Right.
Doing your job. Exactly. That's the hard part. That is, especially every two years.
Mm-hmm.
But let me ask you this. We would still have, we have our process in place for, in case, say, someone got ill and resigned, or someone decided that they really don't like this, you know, and decide that they don't want to spend, you know, three more years doing it.
Right.
We have processes in place to-
There are portions in there that do cover that and tell you what the step-up thing is. For instance, on the council right now, when somebody leaves, the next person on the ballot steps up to take that vacant council seat. If the mayor ran out of here screaming with his hair on fire, the council president would then become the mayor, you know, and the next highest vote-getter would then. With this, if you did it as a split, where you were running three and three every two years, you would have to change the way you, we select the council president, because right now, it's the highest vote-getter. And I think, you know, that could be problematic if, you know, with, who stays the council president is always the, this person, or is it always that person, or do you just select...
Can we find out what other communities are doing with that?
Many communities use a simple vote every two years on who the council president is.
Our school board has, does the split votes, you know, different times, and they vote for their own president every year. That's how they do it.
Every two years. Or do you do it every year?
We do it every year.
It's annual? So you could do something like that, too, you know? But that, you know, you guys would have to decide how you wanted that process to occur, and so that then Ed and I could write the sample resolution that then council would vote on to put it on a ballot.
Is there, through the chair, is there a way that we could do, since we're doing this every three years?
Be every-
Could we, Ed?
Every two years.
Every two years. Is there a way we could list all the council members for a vote for council president on there? Because I do not like the council choosing the president. I think that's something that should stay with the citizens. I think they should decide who their council president is. I do not think this body should select a council president. I think that should be-
I agree.
-left up to the residents. And I think that if we had a term, a seat of four years with three people, and the other three people up to run, I think we should list all those people and have them vote on who the council president is.
That would create another office, and I don't believe that you can do that, because you would have to put everybody's name on the ballot, and it would appear twice. You get what I'm saying?
I think that it's something that the-
Because, because the other thing is, you wouldn't know who the other three people were going to be until after the election.
That's true, too, yeah.
So...
It is something that the residents should decide, not the council. I just think it could be looked at as stacking the council. If you, your president, I don't like it.
Okay.
My comment is, as President Carlos, how many meetings have you had to lead due to the absence of the mayor?
I think maybe just one, it was a study session, I think, and then you ended up coming, I think.
Yeah.
And for Mayor Carnes, I sat in, I believe, once for a meeting and once for a study session.
When I was council president, I only sat in one time.
And do you do anything else outside your purview as councilman, just because you're council president? You know, besides speaking first for council remarks?
When Mayor Carnes was mayor, I was invited to a couple of previous GFL meetings. As Mr. Higgins been mayor, I haven't been chosen for one meeting, so that answers your question.
Okay. I just-
If I can't make a meeting, I have asked, there was something, I don't remember what it was.
The building on Northline Road that did hit the DDA or something?
The DCA.
DCC.
DDC meeting, I assume you would step in for. Yeah.
Yeah, I-
He's basically the back, the council president is generally the backup if the mayor can't make it to something, that he'll ask that, step in.
Because I just see that as adding more confusion to the ballot, because the people would be picking a president from potentially people they really don't know anyways, because they would only know who the people are if they watch the meetings or interact with them or things like that.
I don't know, excuse me, through the chair, if they would be picking that, or right now, it goes by who has the most votes, who's, who do they want the most on council rate?
Right.
Correct? I like that way, more so than, I know it's confusing.
Yeah, you don't have to do a split. I mean, you can still just have all six council seats up for election once every four years.
Do the communities that split, do they take votes on their council president every two years?
It seemed to me that the majority of the ones that I spoke to that have split election times, they select their council person, their council president.
Now, I don't know if this would be mathematically possible, but instead of setting it by how many votes every two years, could you do it by percentage? Because percentage-wise, you could compare, you know, one two-year election to another two-year election.
Sure, because, because when we do the elections, we have, we know what percentage of the voters that cast a vote voted for, you know, Person A, Person B, and Person C. I mean, not only do I get an actual number of votes cast, but it prints the percentage on the thing, too. So if you wanted to, you know, say, well, in the, you know, 24 election, this person got 17 percent, and in the 26 election, this person got 25 percent, so that should be your council person, your council president, you could, you could do it like that?
You would have to do it on an overall percentage of the vote, rather than the amount of votes, because the every other year would be a presidential year, which there is a much higher vote. So the three that are running during the presidential would get higher votes every time. So it would have to be done on a percentage of the overall vote, I would think.
Through the chair, I'm just saying that I don't think that we should take these kind of decisions away from our residents. I think they should be left in our residents' hands, and they should have those decisions. I don't think that's something the council should do.
So through the chair, with respect to Maureen's comment, would it be possible to, you know, like, put out a poll to see if the residents even would prefer, you know, for us to have four-year terms, and then even ask the question of split, or just...
Any polls that we have put out, we don't get a very large number to respond.
No.
Through the chair, please, for me. First off, congressional leaders, they get elected every two years, right? Constituent, Congresswoman don't serve two years? It's a four-year term?
In Congress, it's two years.
The House.
The State House, yeah, the House.
There's some reps in our state that get elected-
The state ones.
The state reps.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the federal ones.
No.
I apologize.
Our state reps serve two years, right? That, there's a reason for that, right? And so, as councilmen and elected officials, we have to remain on our toes and vigilant. A four-year term, you may get elected, and after two years, you may just say, well, you know, I'm, I think that you may get two acts. I appreciate the gender changes. As far as council president, in all reality, it's just if the mayor's in, you fill in. It's not a prestige position, it's nothing special. It's like, you know, I don't care if I don't go to meetings, but if I don't get invited to them, I might go to a meeting. If he's, oh, I'll fill in for him. So all this emphasis on, you know, you can have a little vote getter be picked by a councilman, right? Council wants to pick a low vote getter, that's not what the people want to vote for, right? You can have a low vote getter, and if council wants to pick a low vote getter, then it wouldn't make sense.
Through the chair.
It makes sense. And I'll close by saying, as we go on, we can look at the changes, but, proposed changes, but I think every two years is sufficient. Highest vote getter's always been that. It's not a special title or privilege, so the argument of council president is crazy. So I like the way it is, and I'll speak more later. Go ahead. I'm done.
It is a higher-paid position, though, correct? You do get a fee for being the council president.
I think $500 more.
How much?
Roughly $500.
And for a record, I don't even know what I made. I don't even know how much I made.
I just wanted to clarify.
Well, maybe they should raise the rates all equal to council. That'd be a better change. Everyone have to worry about, if the people are worried about getting paid $500 extra, then bring up everyone's wage or bring, bring the council president down.
Through the chair, you have to realize also, if something were to happen to the mayor, God forbid, he would become the interim mayor as council president. So that's why I'm saying, the way we do it now, there's a reason for it, instead of letting it be appointed by four people on this council. So that would be the residents' choice who would stand in and become our interim mayor. Also, a two-year term for council would be a standard, according to our state representatives. That's good. Now, changing the mayor's position to a four-year term would be a better option, and keeping him in four years and having the council stay at two years, and that's what I would suggest.
I would agree with that.
And that's all I have to say on that.
No comment on that.
Were you going to make a comment on something else?
No, not yet.
Because you asked through the chair.
I made it.
Okay.
Well, that's what we're here for, to get the feeling of everybody, and we want to know what everybody's thinking.
Yes, because there were very differing opinions on the committee on several things that we discussed. It's not a, it's not a cut-and-dried thing. Just because I'm putting it out here doesn't even necessarily mean that I thought it was a good idea. Just so you know, there's, there's some things in here that I do think are a good idea. There's, you know...
Take full honesty, thank you.
I'm not trying to sway you guys one way or the other on any of this, I'm just putting it out there.
Yeah, and personally, I would like to say that whether it be four years or two years, whatever the council gives, I think the mayor should be the same. I don't think it should be different.
So you're saying two years?
I would prefer four years for everybody, but if it's, if we decided to stay two years for the council, I believe the mayor should stay two years as well.
To the chair, do we have a constable?
You do not.
We do not.
You do not have a justice of the peace, which is why, so you'll see in the next couple of sections here, we're gonna get into those. So we've kind of covered the section that I had noted on the terms of office and the council president designation. The next section we went to is Department, Chapter Three, Section One, that references justice of the peace and constable. So we don't have a justice of the peace, we haven't had one in a long time. They've eliminated that position, and they've also eliminated the position of constable. So we no longer have those available, and we should take them, we believe we should just repeal that, that one section that, that one portion of that section that enumerates those offices.
My point was, is it being used, is that funding being used somewhere else?
There is no funding for it.
Oh, no.
There hasn't been in years.
So if we were to support to have it, would there be funding available for it?
I don't see that happening.
Okay.
Because we don't have those positions anymore. We don't utilize them.
How long has it been?
They haven't been here since I've been here for 30 years.
30 years, that I know of.
Hasn't been a constable in at least 30 years.
And there's, there's another section coming soon that also suggests that we remove the city health officer. We no longer have a city health officer, that is all handled by the Wayne County Health Department, so it's a...
I get it.
It's an extra appendage that we no longer have, so we can, you can do a resolution to remove that section, or an amendment to it, to remove that section fairly easily and just take out that reference.
I'm good with that.
The, the other thing was in the, this, oh, there was some discussion on changing the office of clerk and treasurer to appointed offices, as opposed to elected offices. There are some pros and cons to that, especially in the office of city clerk. It's a very, it is a full-time position, as opposed to the treasurer's office, which is a part-time. And it does require a working clerk right now, because we don't have the positions for a part-time clerk that would just come in and do the meetings on every other Monday and go home and not touch anything.
To the chair, wasn't it a neighboring community, though, that had...
There are.
Because it, there was more responsibility on the treasurer than they expected.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So one of the, one of the pros to an appointed clerk would be that you can get, when I leave, okay, we're gonna just throw this example out there, we don't have anybody in my office who lives in the city that can, you know, step up and run for this position and step into it, because the deputy clerk is currently not a resident of this city, and you have to be a resident in order to be elected. That means that whoever gets this position will undoubtedly be someone with no experience as a clerk. So there is some benefit to being able to have an appointed clerk. You could go find a deputy clerk in a neighboring community, or use the one that we have in place to replace me after I'm gone, if it was an appointed position.
To the chair, is it something, though, that you could possibly have notes, or, I mean, I know that there's-
I do have, there's, there's-
I mean, there's, they can learn as they go, correct?
They can.
If they're smart enough, they're-
They can, it's, you know, it's not, please don't misunderstand me, I'm not telling you that I'm-
No, no, no.
...the end-all, be-all, that I'm irreplaceable, you know? There was somebody before me, there'll be somebody after me. I'm, I'm, you know, I was using myself as an example, because my current deputy is not a Lincoln Park resident, and I, it just kind of flowed right away.
Yeah.
So there's some pro there. The con to that could be that someone who is an appointed clerk would be more likely to be influenced by other elected officials or appointed officials to sway opinions their way, because they would be afraid of not being reappointed. I'm not afraid of not being reappointed by you, because you don't appoint me now, you know? And I don't mean that to be disrespectful, I'm just, you know...
And the other, and the other thought, if I can, on this was, over the years, and I've been around long enough that I know I have seen the evolution of the clerk's office, we need a professional person in there now. Carrie does, because she's been here, she knows, and you need an experienced person in that office to do what she does. It's a lot more doing than it was years ago.
When I first started.
It's not just her, but it's the clerk's office as a whole in all cities, you know, you've become a lot more professional, you've become a lot more rules that you've got to know about, there's more laws that you've got to know about, just as we never had a city manager at one point. We need one now, I believe, because the rules and the laws have changed, and you need a professional there. And that's what the thought was. So there is give and go on both sides of this. This is something that both sides of the committee looked at.
The chair.
They were both, you know...
In reference to his being, being open to being persuaded, one of the thoughts that were thrown out there, much like our Public Service Commission currently selects the police chief and the fire chief, was trying to introduce a similar-type board situation that would be responsible for appointing the city clerk, and then that commission would report to us to give us a layer of transparency between them being, you know, not being directly appointed by, but being appointed by a commission to make it more difficult for any appointed or elected officials to try to sway favor one way or another. And one thing I discovered in the charter is, we did used to have a municipal service commission, whose literal job was to hire a worker for the cities, but that has long since gone, gone away. So that is, that would be one of the ancillary consequences that could also come up if we did choose to go with the appointed versus the elected.
And the other thought that came up with the commission was, let's be honest, we're not getting a lot of people running for office for any office. The clerks has run unopposed several times, not just Carrie, but even before her. The treasurer has run unopposed for quite some time, so... So, when they don't run, will there be somebody run? So, that thought came into it, too. And again, I'm just telling you, the feeling of the commission, both sides, I'm not trying to sway anybody on this particular vote, just letting everybody know that there was a, that there is a reason to think about it, that's all.
Through the chair, if I could ask, do we have examples of other communities that have appointed clerks and treasurers, just so that we could, if, you know, if we choose to do some research on our own and just get an idea of what that would be like?
Yeah, so Garden City's clerk is appointed, Wayne's clerk is appointed.
Carrie, does the MML book might...
Outlay some of that. It might. Those are just the two that I can think of in Wayne County right off the top of my head. I believe that the majority of them, especially in the townships, those are all elected. Very seldom, because the clerk is also a board member, a voting board member in townships. So, they...
I'd like to see a comparison to that, you know? I mean, in all honesty, too, like, are those positions also appointed every two years or is it, you know?
That I don't know. I never really went through and investigated that side of it. I believe they're probably like any other appointed, they have a term of their contract, and it would be whatever, you know, you worked out with them and signed a contract for.
Yeah, because we have to think ahead, too.
Just like a city manager.
Right, if we did that, you know, then we're, then we have to think, are we putting them, putting the city clerk in with an administrator's contract? You know, I'm like, there's...
Yeah, there would be a lot of...
There's still a lot of questions.
Way to think it out, yeah.
Yeah.
To the chair.
Just one second. Kathy, you raised your hand. Did you want to, could you stick to the microphone just so people can hear?
You can't hear my teacher voice coming on.
It's recording at home.
I believe either Flat Rock or Room Review appoint theirs, because Gordon Gilbert's niece is the clerk in one of those two communities. I don't remember which. So, there are, like I said, downriver, there are at least that one. I'm not sure which one it is, but she is appointed.
Okay.
So...
Well, I'm sorry, but Eric was up next.
Is everybody through before me?
Well, go ahead.
My point is, is though, why can't we create a program, a co-op program or something, if somebody was interested, kind of follow our clerk and see if there's something that they would be able to do? I mean, there are programs out there to do that, not to follow you, but I'm just saying, you know...
So, the Bureau of Elections, the Bureau of Elections has training programs that you go to. I've done them. There's an accreditation class. There's what they call the institute, the institute academy, and then they also have master's institute.
Does that cover all the licenses and all that as well?
It would, yes.
Through the chair. Are you done there?
Yes.
Okay, well. I'm sorry.
If we decide to do an appointment like this, then, you know, we're going to lose the ability to find a resident that might be willing to come up and step forward and run for election. And I think that we need to, when Carrie is ready, because we don't want Carrie to go, because she is of vast importance to the city and her knowledge is...
She's full of useless knowledge.
Something that we cherish greatly. But like Eric's saying, if someone could follow Carrie or someone could, you know, experience what she does, if we could generate interest in somebody taking her position or learning her position, or if something, you know, to generate that we are going to be needing a clerk down the road, we are going to be needing a treasurer, because I know in Lincoln Park, there are plenty of people with treasurer experience, accounting experience, those kind of skills, you know, and they might just be looking for that kind of opportunity. But it's been so long, and let's face it, Carrie, it's kind of underrated what you do. They're not, no one's out shouting you like you should be shouted, you know? So, I think that before we go ahead and try to get this, an appointed position, because I don't think we all really want to put another contract out there and put another thing in-house that we don't have to, I think we should try to figure out ways to get and generate interest in these positions and get people, see if we can get people interested in possibly running down the road a little bit. It's just something, I mean, this is stuff that the city's been built on, and we've done this all along. And before we just jump to change it, I think we should try to generate interest in keeping it going.
And again, these are, like I said, these were suggestions that, you know, you guys are going to have to arm wrestle over and, you know...
And what you're saying about bringing interest into the clerk's office and getting people involved, that's, I would say, with the council, with the mayor, treasurer, everybody. I mean, I preach that everywhere I go, more involvement, more involvement, more involvement. And I believe Cows had something to say.
Just a comment and a question to Carrie, but in my recent life in Lincoln Park, I can remember like only Irene Bartel as a clerk, longtime clerk, Donna Breeding, longtime clerk, now here you're in the same shoes. So, that position normally does last a long time.
It does.
I get that. However, I also remember...
Not getting any younger.
True. But also in recent memory, we've had a former mayor and a resident run for city clerk. So, we've had elections. Had one of those persons won, they may be sent here today. Maybe their first election may not go on that smooth, but needless to say, they got elected. So, I would imagine in St. Lincoln Park, we have qualifications for treasurer and clerk. Maybe the state may have to come and help on election the first time, I don't know. But I, once again, I'd like the election for clerk and treasurer. That's my point. Thank you.
Through the chair, so if I could, then, Lisa, I know we've talked about a co-op program before, and it's really gone nowhere.
Yeah.
I think Councilman Zor brings up a good point. I think using a co-op program from the high school would be advantageous to us, not just in the clerk's office, but in other departments as well.
Yeah, and I know, I think it's been a few years that we looked at it, and I think the biggest obstacle we faced is back, because I started as a co-op, we had business classes. So, generally, we'd go to, the city would, or the administration would go to the business teachers, and they would, you know, pull people from those programs. Those classes have diminished throughout the years. But we can definitely reach out to Mr. Dangerfield and see if there is some way that he can, you know, promote it to students, and we can get some, because a lot of departments, the clerk's office and others could use, you know, even just filing and general clerical help.
Absolutely.
It's a great way to get...
It's a great way for them to get their foot in the door, see if they like it.
Right.
And another idea, and you being the liaison to the schools, you may want to bring it, bring back, Student Government Day was a wonderful thing. We used to bring one day here, bring the kids, some over to the high school. They used to elect a mayor and council. I was on the council when I was on my senior year, and, you know, they brought them over here and kind of understood what the job was and kind of understood what the city was because a lot of people don't even understand where our buildings are or what we do, and more information, more everybody. We only have about 20 minutes, so we...
So, then the next thing that we were talking about was the removal of the section regarding the city health officer, which we kind of already talked about because Wayne County handles all of the health department stuff now. Then that change of term of office actually went along with what we discussed earlier. And then at the treasurer's request, we also discussed removing the payment option on the summer tax bill. And again, that's, you know, it has its pros and cons.
All right, Maureen.
I just want to state that I think it would be a very bad idea to remove that option, especially in this day and age when people are having issues with the inflation and making payments and with the taxes going up like they just have and the difficulty of making these big payments now. I think that it would be detrimental to our tax base. I think we would lose residents. I think we would lose homeownership, and I am totally against doing that.
I agree.
I agree.
Yep.
We live in a lower income...
Then the next one was in chapter five, section 13, it says that the clerk's office needs to maintain 100 copies of the charter, and I think that's a little...
Excessive.
Yeah, and would much prefer to only have 10 on hand or to just add references to where it can be found on the internet.
A QR code on your counter.
QR code on the counter. Perfect. And it also discuss, discusses things about being in the official newspaper of the city. Right now, we're using the News Herald because it is really the only newspaper in town that's not astronomical in its charges for publishing. I mean, it's still hefty, don't get me wrong, but the free press news is much, much more expensive.
We, by law, we have to advertise on a newspaper, and in all honesty, when we advertise online to websites and webpages, you're getting twice as many people understanding what we're seeing than at the newspaper. The newspapers are a thing of the past, and whether or not you like it or not, it's something we need to look at the future.
Okay, and then the last thing that we talked about was repealing chapter, what is that, 14, Municipal Service Board. They haven't had any meetings since 2005. Their board members stopped showing up for meetings and could never get enough people to apply for it. They never had a quorum because they could never get enough people on it.
Can you tell us what the music, what they did?
So, what the Municipal Service Board did was approve the hirings of the human resources department. It was personnel and purchasing back then, but what the personnel office had recommended. So, they approved those hirings.
But now we have HR, and they do that? Is that what you're saying?
Well, there, it was a board that approved what HR had already done.
Right, so they would make the recommendations, right, Carrie? And then the board would formalize it, either yea or nay.
I had been working probably two months before the Municipal Service Board had a meeting and approved my hiring, but I was already...
Kind of redundant.
Working and drawing a paycheck. So, it...
Another layer.
Another layer that's not necessary anymore. Kathy would like to speak again. And by the way, I would like to thank Kathy publicly for, you know, the time she puts in for, not only for this committee, but for the many things, many, many things she does for the city on the historical commission, she is on the school board, she does many things for the city, and just, thank you.
You're welcome, and I've served on a couple of, I served on the Public Safety Commission for a while, too, on the community improvement. But anyway, oh, God, what was I going to say? Mike just messed me up here. What were we talking about?
Municipal Service Board.
The Municipal Service Board. When I was younger and before all of you were involved in the city, they actually did the testing for employees. There was account level, accountant levels, and the guys at the DPS had to be tested. That's what they used to, that's some of what they used to do, was they would organize the testing that went on for these employees, you know, typing and their knowledge and things like that is what they did before. And then they would bring it to council, and you have the ultimate say. The other thing with these things, and it's been said a couple of times, too, is you want the voters to decide. These recommendations, the voters are going to decide. You're not going to decide until you go and vote. So, to put it out there, ask that, you know, ask them what they want. They can turn this, part of it, they're going to be able to do it individually and turn things down. So, consider that, you know, that doesn't mean you're, you know, you're giving them a choice to do these things. I mean, they can be tweaked, you know, to put it on there, but ultimately, the voters are going to decide this, not you guys. You're just, we're asking you to put the stuff on the ballot and make some changes to be in this century. Change is hard, trust me, I know, but this document's 100, we're going to be 125 years old. So, we need to bring it up because a lot of those changes were, the changes I saw were the 50s and 60s, so we're still pretty far behind on some of those. So, that's my two cents worth. Thank you.
Through the chair, Your Honor. Yes.
Final comment. Are you, are you committee going to meet again, and if they do, are they going to take perhaps the notes from this meeting and maybe go over some things, or where we go from here?
What I was going to suggest was everybody to take what we took from the meeting tonight. Think about what you want to decide, and then contact Carrie. Let her know your thoughts on the different individual things that we talked about tonight so that we have, you know, have, take that extra time to think about it. Let her know where your heads are at, and then we'll come back one more time and say this is what we want to go forward with. This is what, this way, everybody has their own individual time to think about.
Or this is definitely not something we want to even fool with. You know, whatever way you're going, you just need to let me know so that we can put stuff together.
And she'll take a, they wait the poll, it's not a vote, and then we can bring it back here for a vote once she hits a poll.
Okay, so, just so you understand the timeframes and the things that we have to step through in order to get these on there. Next year, we technically don't have any elections scheduled, but we could do charter amendments on a special election at either in August or in November. It's almost already too late to do a May because after you guys decide what you want, we'll have to have, add, do the language, the ballot language. That ballot language will have to be approved by you on a resolution that gets sent to the state for the governor and the attorney general's office to go over. Those have to be submitted six months before the election that they'll appear on because it takes them that long to make those decisions and give those approvals. The ballot language has to be submitted by a certain date before the election to the county clerk to put on the ballot. So, we're looking at, if you were thinking about putting anything on an August election, it would have to be ready to go to the governor's office sometime in January, February, maybe, if you were really pushing it. If you're looking at putting something on a November ballot, you have another couple of months there. But we can't drag our feet too long on this because it's going to take some time for to prep the language, for you guys to vote on the language, for the language to be submitted, for the governor's office to approve, and then ultimately, we have to meet that deadline for the ballot language to the county clerk, which I believe is 14 weeks before an election. So, we've, you know, backing it up. We need to not rest on this too long if you're going to try and do something next year.
So, I'd like everybody to look at what we got, think it, think it over, and then give Carrie a call. And with that, does anybody else have any final?
Just one more question. Do you think it's better to do this on an off year?
Absolutely.
If you, if you did thing, if you did it in the off year, anything that you were going to do that may or may not affect the selected body would have time to be in effect by the time...
Oh, for the next election. Oh, for the next election.
The 26 elections come up, which is why I was suggesting maybe next year in August or November to have a special.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like it to be in November, just because you get more votes out in November.
You do.
How much does it cost to put on just a one-time charter amendment election?
About $35,000.
On an off year?
$35,000.
But if you had on a general election year?
We would ride with.
Thank you.
It would be more on a...
No, no, on a, if it was an election that had state, federal, county offices on it, some of that stuff is, is covered by them. It's still gonna cost you, but it's an election that we have to have. So us putting a charter amendment on a ballot in November, August of 2026 wouldn't increase the cost of that election at all.
Okay, I like that better.
But remember that anything that you wanted to do...
Right.
Regarding elective offices...
Right, right, if we choose that.
I'm just throwing it out there.
Right.
You have to know that then wouldn't be able to be in effect until the 28-year.
It's kicking the can down for the road.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have to...
Nope. Everybody all set? So there being no further discussion, the study session is adjourned at 6:51.
Okay.
About 10 minutes to...